This is just an update. So we'll just start with the Conservation Commission, their budget this past year was set at 24,000, 10,000 for Sustainable Connecticut Certification Programs, and then the rest for water testing, mapping, Chris?
Water testing, mapping, and potential support for a transportation master plan.
Hey, Chris, can you just review for us what is, what are you guys responsible for?
So that's a great question. I think earth, wind, fire, and water. And so the Conservation Commission has responsibility for open space monitoring and the natural resources of New Canaan in its biggest parameter. And it also takes on, it has sort of like a water rebid of historical attributes or important assets of the town. The additional responsibility it has is it was given responsibility to oversee Bristow Park. So it has an unusual element in that regard. And we're meant to be participants in the plan of conservation development to see what the conservation side wants to develop. And, you know, fully. I'm gonna turn off one of our speakers here. Does that help yours?
Yes, it helps very much.
So, so in, in, in looking at that rebid, so the land part, the earth part, it's, it's about our open space and public spaces. The, the air part is really about, you know, just fresh air, clean air, and what we do from that state. Water, water testing, water quality. And in New Canaan, there's a big linkage between open space and water quality, particularly with about half the town on well water. So, and that's another reason why we have four acres only, two acres only, one acre only above a certain line. And then, you know, I won't say fire, but combustion or what have you. It's, it's releasing CO2 and things like that. So think of it as sort of an environmental permit, but really a focus on the town's natural resources.
Okay, thank you.
And this wasn't previously part of the Town Council Committee Parks, Parks and Conservation?
The Conservation Commission was only chartered, I think, three or four years ago officially chartered as a, as a town organization. Conservation Commission's charter. It was exactly like a present charter. It was, it was existed, but.
And some of the things this year and some of the past meetings, I know you discussed, walk audit, the, there was discussion about EV chargers, but that would be under the Parking Commission. And then green link with crosswalks. Tiger, do you know that the House Bill, the pedestrian safety bill, 5429, it allows local municipalities more flexibility with state roads? Would that help with putting in crosswalks without the study on the state roads?
No.
No?
Yeah, no, I, I talked to the, the Director of Traffic Engineering. It was Friday, I believe, Thursday or Friday last week. And, uh, no, I would still need a traffic study. I'd still need the signalization plan. So he put me in touch with a couple of people who've done them on the state side for them underneath the new recommendations and the new requirements. And, uh, we reached out to them today to try to help us, but no. That, uh, that new bill is more on the side of setting speed limits and things of that nature for the local traffic authority, but not, they're not giving up control on their end.
Right. That was pretty much all the notes set up for the year. Anything else?
I should just make one or two out of common. One is that the, by charter, Conservation, the Chair of Conservation Commission is ex officio on the Board of Laughter. That's the only other cross linkage organization that exists. And then I would, I would also mention that from a Conservation Commission standpoint, I don't know where that lies, it's sort of DWD, but from a plan of conservation development, part of the Conservation Department was how do we increase access or green links throughout town to allow the town to be more of a walking connection? And Tiger's well aware of this, the real goal is to create the envelope necklace where people can walk from Wavy up through the outer, with open the nature center through the historic history and then back down. And you're done. And I run into people who do it. You see them in Wavy and then half hour later you see them out of me. They've just figured out a way to zigzag their way through it. But to, to improve that and document it, I think would be great for downtown, great for the whole center of town. Then people could come in and then do a walk and drive up as well. That would be a great ARPA opportunity. Addresses equity access, things like that. So it's just, and maybe plan to increase.
Yeah. And you can actually use Sustainable Connecticut, or at least you could, or at least one crosswalk, they said. Um, okay, so. Rec, Ray, I'm sorry, you can jump in if you want to get in here too. Um, might as well start with tennis. Permit sales were up 70%, 473 passes this year. That's double from last year.
Yeah, we are, yeah, the pandemic kind of helped the revitalization of tennis. Why is the SOCA when the commentators comment was that people pick heads back and get one, it's not for the sport, two, it's to keep social business and three, be good exercise. And we've seen that. Our, 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 our tennis clinics in the summer of 2020, we had, uh, between youth and adults, we had about a lot of 500 people, 500 people play tennis. And I think that's incredible. Our permit sales jumped. I remember it's all of us a couple of years ago. Well, it was on your way out. Well, back, back in 2017, 2018, the Commission thought maybe reducing the protests. But we are, it, it since the pandemic, it, our permit sales would have been incredibly exponential. We had, we had 400 sentry permits this past year, it was 277, so. It's, there were planes, they've got online reservations, which is a big help. For Tiger, in July, we opened five pickleball courts in the park. We aren't charging a permit fee for the right now, allowing residents to sign up online. And they go online, make a reservation, tennis, tenement, modern golf, pickleball courts. That's why we're welcome, a lot of people, pickleball starts in clinics. We have three clinics that also allow. For all tennis registrations, for clinics, right now we have 116 youth and 50 adults.
Will passes have to be sold though for Pickle at some point?
We haven't sold it yet. I think we will look at in the future whether we do a racket, a racket, beat park racket pass, which is.
Go that way because. Do you think we have a good relationship with or just liking opposed?
That's Mike Morris.
Mike, you want, Mike, you want to mute yourself?
Um. So is it on our system now?
Pickleball, pickleball, no, we, 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 we say residents are getting a bigger reservation. So if you're to get a resident, you, you go online to the, to the tennis court. They'll send you a password, then you get your resident, you get a reservation, pickleball.
Has it been well used?
Yeah, people are using it, great. It's a body industry. We, we started two clinics, we've got a third clinic, and we're also doing a clinic for newcomers. Sitting with tennis, newcomers to the after, for, we can help them do a newcomers, tennis clinic, just their members. And we've done that since, like, that last one too. It's great.
If people, there was, there was a concern about noise of the rackets and the ball coming in. Any feedback on that?
Um, no, we just ask people to start, not to start playing pickleball. Because it is a little bit of noise. Yeah, I don't, I don't favor it too bad. Right now these little trees, so it kind of shows, maybe you get the train going by as well. When I walked through there, I worked on this during lunch, but backed up.
So at the, the BOF meeting on the budget, you had said that the spring clinics had all filled up.
Right.
But you couldn't add anymore because you couldn't spend revenue, you need a line item.
Well, we, we ran a four time.
Okay, so that's it now, okay.
That's a good problem. What's happened is we've got, we've got a lot of interest. We were set up, we have to have a line item to pay the charges for it. It's called tennis, where I've got to have a revenue line, so I can't, I can't spend.
Yeah, but I think, I think you can work that out with them. Because you know, there's demand for this, you know, you, you're not going to lock in somebody unless people have it. I think that's an easy workaround. I think just talk. Well, you're more than, you make money out of it. So I think, I think, I think, let, let not, let's not let that be a barrier.
No, no, so it's great. It's, it's exciting. Tennis, tennis on the big deal back. We had, in the summer of 2020, a group of guys got together. And they formed the Deep Park Holiday Tennis Club, the County Tennis League. And the clubs, and, and I think they show up. They, they would play Wednesday nights. Really, the Collinane area being fixed up, the patio, they were able to set their, their table up there. And the guys could sit back after the matches, just to resurrect having a good time. And so we're done.
Um, I had someone ask me about, I'm sorry, the, if there, possibly the hut at some point there?
Uh, not down in the Collinane area, but we were talking, we're talking about possibly trying to put either a canopy over part of the area or put a, a trellis over so you have some shade. We do have funds to put in the tennis. Find a location for that, so it could be, it would be a gateway to the whole pickleball.
Hey, Steve, I, I think it's an outstanding job you and Tiger and the team have done with the pickleball courts. I use it, as you know, it's, it's great, it's a very social thing. And, uh, and it's great to relax afterwards in that little sitting area afterwards. Uh, so I think it's, it's an outstanding add to our town. My only quick question is, as the fall comes and the leaves that fall from the tree, is there any chance we could have a broom or something there to sweep off the leaves? So that if they fall off, the participants can just like clean off the course? Because I think as we get into the colder months, there's going to be more leaves on these pickleball courts.
Like, yeah, I blow out every morning, but there, there is a battery powered leaf blower in the shed. So if the acid test is pending, you probably need to blow it off. The battery powered leaf blower.
Okay, okay.
Rather than shoot the broom, I've got a battery powered leaf blower in the tennis shed. The tennis is pending, you probably can blow them off.
All right, that'd be great, yeah. If, uh, you let them know, that'd be fantastic, because that's even easier, so, perfect solution.
If they don't, if they don't gas it, they'll squeeze the button and it goes.
Yeah. All right, that's great. We'll do that. Thank you. I know it took a long time to do it, but I, I'm, as a resident, I'm very excited. And I think a lot of other residents are excited about this new addition. As we get older, we don't play tennis as much.
A lot of people play it, my wife's a player, she's played a couple times a week.
Steve, maybe put a note up saying, hey, if you need a week for a, a, a tennis.
The other question they asked, they're raised, they're going to get some squeaky rollers. And there are, like, a lot of these are all backward. I've got, I've got one roller hanging there, but I've got four squeaks in order. The roller squeaks, they have.
All right, great.
Uh, paddle tennis. I know there was a summer attendant this year for a couple of few days.
We decided to extend the paddle season to the end, end of June because players are playing. People want to get out and, and exercise. So we had a great year of paddle. We had, we had 279 adult passes, 63 female passes. We had 55 family passes. We, our pass sales were way up over the last year. We have about four to seven, which was great. And then, we had a lot of, we, we had the four leagues teams playing, the River County Blues Paddle Tennis League. We had three men's teams playing the league. We had some son playing with a T1 team playing in the River County. We ran some spring clinics, we had one in the past in Bay for people. We ran, we ran a normal fall winter clinics. So the income paddles has grown immensely. And our revenue is, wait, our revenue was $78,000 per shoe paddle.
That's amazing, man. That basically bought the fifth floor.
Yeah. And we did a lot of improvements to paddle, so this way, over the summer, we replaced 14 screen sections that had failed. We had that fail. We had court one repaid. We had a contractor come in and pressure wash and hang all the security around the courts. Tiger came in and was concerned about the way the water came in towards the drains. That puts some pervading cars parking stuff. They made a more circle from the, from the, the lots there, so that, that's good. We, things can be done for the rest of the COVID situation. The lot should be able to play and further premise to use it by a rural basis in October, we open up.
Testing right now, right?
Right.
Isn't there testing?
Right now, Tuesdays, Thursdays, we're testing.
Go with testing.
When you need, ready to go, so. We're, we're supporting, get people back into the hut and have this day with socializing to play the paddles.
Are we going to be able to extend the hours that the hut is available? We talked about that earlier.
It's open, it's open till 10 o'clock today.
Okay, so when's the last, when's the last court time?
Uh, the course closes at 10, so it's open till, it's open till 10.
Yeah, I just know people talked about wanting to hang out there afterwards.
But, you know, you want people to hang, it's kind of hard to hang out butterfly room pretty nice. So we close at 10 o'clock, and it works out pretty good. If someone wants to attend, you can lock the hut up, leave the porch open, the guys can turn the light on. Lock the door wide, basically, the tent is locked, and it seems to work pretty well.
Yeah, I just remember from earlier conversations, people were saying, maybe if we had a situation where the cameras and you let it go, just to.
That's, you don't, you don't really, that's half the fact, we get protected, who's there? We don't feel like it, we block the door.
Can you, can the RIT Department find out if people liked having the attendant over the summer? Because most people I spoke to said that just the, just having the online reservation system was enough for them.
Yeah, but, but sort of play is not as intense as in the fall weather. So we, we kept, kept the reservations, I shut it off in August because we were doing paint.
Close, yeah.
Which port they were going to be on, working on. So it wants to make a reservation, or three, and the guys, and the ladders and stuff. They can, they can three or four squeaks in. So I, I didn't, we, it's kind of a luck of ours, a maintenance point, so.
Yeah, but is it worth the extra cost to have the attendant over the summer? You know, for June and July, rather than just having the online?
No, I would do the online, I, I just kept intending on Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I didn't have anybody in Monday or Friday. But Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the busy nights.
Okay.
I had an attendant at 7:00, 7:00, 6:30, did not apply.
I, I think, Robin, originally the, the intent was so that we could, the players who play paddle could have a place to go inside, you know, afterward. It wasn't for the online reservation system as much as being able to use the hut. You know, we had talked about a lot of options, including giving a code to the, to the past members. But Steve thought it best for now to have a tenant. So I think it's a valuable thing for the participants to be able to use the hut, whether it's a, an attendant or giving us a code. But having the hut shut down is something that I thought doesn't make sense. We have such a beautiful hut, not to be able to use after the game.
Well, I think, you know, basically, most of the players Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had some, up to 10 o'clock, so that worked out. And I think, once you got to the middle of, early, middle of July, first week of July, and people were doing other things. So I think the month of June, having, having the tenant, 10 o'clock, that was wrong. We're definitely good.
And then, um, with how much paddles brought in? Just because I'm getting these questions, I'm telling them to contact people to email Rhonda. Uh, they're asking about if there can be more clinics.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is, is trying to do clinics in court time.
Okay.
Because people want to play, and, and your clinics take up top court time. But I mean, I got, I got a lot of criticism last week when we ran a preseason clinic on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday from nine to 12 on two courts. Some ladies were going crazy, well, you pulled two courts for a clinic. Well, we filled the clinic from nine to 12. It was, it was well, well steeped, and, you know, but people want to play, and, and we're taking the time away. So right now, we run our rec racing clinics on, on Tuesday to Friday from nine to 12. We run some places Sunday afternoon. It's hard to take the time away if people want, people want to play.
Is, is it every week that the clinics are? So people would know.
No, we run, we run a, we run a six week clinic in the fall, we run an eight week clinic.
And it's like pre-bolt, so people would know.
People sign that time, so it's an inter, intermediate base plan.
And there's a spring one as well there?
And we'll, we'll, there's spring, it's very popular.
Right, um, anything else?
We got, we should, we have four women's teams, but there's one change, the women's clinic this year, the Friday, people play. One people play on Friday mornings, so they work that around, like, quick. Make sure people are courting the fall. The pool went very well, we had a very successful year. We had, we, we had a brief. A lot, a lot, a big increase in our, in our, in our family passes. We went from 625 passes last year, to 817 family passes, became registered, so.
Oh, was that 600?
Right. We, last year we did 624, this year we did 817. We did not sell any non-resident passes last year because COVID. This year we sold 960. So the pool was basically, we had a, we had a good, good season. We had, had 167 individuals, 180 point seniors of 90, 80s. We had a total of 1,350 passes sold this year. Our revenues, is that my must have? Um, it's up there. Well, yeah, the last five years, the most we had was, was 1,175. The nice thing is that this April will be the final payment of the lot. We'll help put some money aside for, for, you know, the pool is 22 years old, so 57. Some expenses for, as far as upgrading the comps, the filters, supporting the park. We got to put our money aside, we can do that. But the, you know, our, our guest fees were strong, we had 300,000 guest fee. Pool revenues per row were, were, uh, we wanted a total of $579,000 last year. Revenue pool, that's enterprise fund, it's got to pay for all those operating expenses.
How much is in the enterprise fund right now?
Pass was 450 per resident.
No, the enterprise fund.
How much is in it?
Yeah.
About, I think it's about 800,000. We're, we're a good financial.
Steve, one thing I've heard from a number of people is that the pool isn't very clean. And I've heard it from many, many people. And I know in the past, we, I think it's been in the budget to hire a service.
We did.
We did.
The, the problems, the service comes every Saturday, the actual pool. We try and put the robot in again. The problem we have is the wipe stages are five period, five days a week. And they're out, they get out of the pool at eight o'clock. My swim team comes at 8:30, swimmers come at 8:30, 12. They get delivered to 11 o'clock, 11:20. Pool's open at eight o'clock at night, there's no license, so you can't clean it at night. It, it, we try to do the robotic in the best we can, let it run for a couple hours, just to clean. But I hired, I hired the clean, the pool contractor. They're coming every Saturday morning, they're there at 6:30 morning, they clean the pool, they back the pool for the Saturday.
Because I've heard it a lot, it's just, and it's, it's, it's heavily used, so I know.
You got a lot of bees blowing in, unfortunately, because you've got a lot of trees in the area, it's, you've got bees.
Yeah, bandits on it, stuff, but, um, there, have you thought about, it's not unusual for a facility to have to say, we're down for this period of time for cleaning? I just feel like, well, it is hard, but it should, it, it has to be cleaned.
Oh, I understand, that's clean.
And also like the deck and all that stuff too. I, I, I've heard a lot of people just, yeah, it's a beautiful facility.
No, no, I understand.
But it's got to be, you're out there to keep it clean.
Clean, clean the pool, clean the bottom of the pool if you have to, if you have to, find a time. It's when you shut the pool down, it's hard to shut down during the day because people want to be there. And, you know, you're open to help at 11 AM to eight o'clock, right? So it's, it's hard to shut. And you really can't back in there after eight o'clock, it's always getting dust, and you can't see the water. So that's what you do. But I, I do, we do try and do robotic for hours too, I would like to, and then we take it out. That can't even in overnight, because it runs for so long, it shuts off. It's about 5:00, 5:00, 5:00, they get it out, or the white piece they got, it's sort of piled up there, I get it at $6,000.
Right, and do you think, we got to think about how to keep it clean? It's, it's used a lot, and it's, you know, ice warming, and it's.
You get one storm, and you go, these are, you can't help it. We do, we do keep on top. Every, every Saturday morning, they clean up. They sent two, they sent two guys down to back the door.
Maybe they had to come twice. Maybe they had to come in really early during the week as well. I mean, people pay, they pay a lot.
I understand.
If people were paying, they pay another, they pay another 10 bucks on their fee to make sure it's clean. I think, I think you need to look some up.
But, you know, the, the problem is, it used to be the white swim teams a lot, three days a week. And then, because I said, you need two more to put the robot or something. And it was, now they're going to come five days a week, so that, that, that's, that's a big difference. There are five thirty, there's eight, eight o'clock in the morning, so every morning, five a week.
Is there any way to run two or lots, if you got a second lot?
Uh, it could, the, the chance you can take, well.
All of that's.
Or they, they pull, they pull, they pull a lot of cables, cables.
Just thinking of the box.
And I, I had a question before, I had to modify our rails of the haycatcher. Because when, on the wall, and they go up under the rail, they, they wrap some round, and they come up on the haycatcher. They have to, they're going to pick it up, and, and pay for it. And that's what we look at.
Yeah, I think that can be good.
Is the Y there five days a week because of COVID now?
No, they're there for, the swim teams, practice, they have a long course team, they practice also, they practice starting in June, or, or, first week in August. They pay us a fee for these.
Maybe, maybe they have to rent new boards or something.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I've heard. And what about the, because someone contacted me about the bathrooms, and I have not been to the pool this year.
That's a problem with addressing facilities. It's not really happening, they're not as good as the, they're the.
Okay.
We, we, last year, during COVID, I thought. They came in, they came at 11 o'clock, because we had the Washington team, the Icefield team, two lessons. So 11:00, they said, cool, two days, and then they do a laser, and they get back. And then they get back at eight o'clock, and they get back. The new company, happens, it's a, it's a.
We're, we're having issues with the cleaning company. We're, we're looking at revising their contract and bringing in a different firm to help supplement. That's a, that's a discussion for the first selectman and the board of selectmen.
There's some problems, but, yeah, I, I know, I, I, people, people complain, and I, I work a couple of times, chase, twelve people, so. It's a little frustrating.
Yeah, staffing's hard this year, it's tough to staff.
All right.
It's tough to get, it's a tough, tough.
Well, I, I, it's hard to get people.
Yeah.
Um, go on this.
Once, once we, we, we tried to request, we rebid, once, we did a few things, we, 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 Steve Day worked really hard. He, he worked for the newcomers club, they came in with four or five afternoon events for families. We had an ad on social on Saturday night there from six to eight o'clock. We worked extended, we became a library, a library came in twice a week with Storytime, which was bringing three or four kids, they were sitting on the beach, they were through character. And we, we finished the summer off with a, they had a Harry Potter birthday party. And so they came to Storytime and kissed their stuff, the Harry Potter motif, and they had a, and they had one, we had the ice cream stuff. We had about 90 cases of that, so. So, you know, once, once, people are coming back here, we got, we kind of got wiped out either. The first time in 30 something years, the river came up over the banks, fully flooded the park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
Washed, washed the sand out of the beach, really bad. And I, I had to buy 100 tons of sand, the highway guys could spread, the Joel runs and stuff, and it just covered the beaches. But the, the old log rooms of the ancient, was about inches long before. The guy, Bill Austin's a, a guy came down, and he goes, like, washed it out. First ice, 35 years. There was a lot of playing problems on the platform, we were, Tiger's guys had a reach out, and Bill Pond, we'll celebrate. It was a surprise, we shot.
What was the, the, the Y that we can't, the sharing, the Y that can't, was it co-used this year?
Yes, we went back, we had, they had their park, we had our own park, it went very well. They're able to use, we, we did not bring our camp down to our daycare. We still had 60 kids, because we're still trying to stay within the last name there. So we kept the kids waiting, so they, they were waiting to nine or one, and we didn't take that one. So we didn't want to put kids in possibly. We, we, Bill, Bill cabinet reached out with that, and our other camp, we were able to utilize the school for our, our. Our other kids, so that we got everyone. Like, school, let's say, so it worked out, we brought our classes there. The white camp, they had 170 kids, 120 kids, and they, they were, they were, these are the vulnerable.
And their contract was 10,000 this year?
Yes. We had a new one, rolls up this year, first time. There were four 20 foot rolls. But the, the, we've got some issues, there are people, a lot of people moving to town, and they've been there. Your pool patch, you can't use one, so people came down and discovered, oh, this is really nice. A lot of moms were having problems with that, spent an hour.
Is the area leased a lot?
Yes, it's, it's incredible, because B Park is, B Park is jammed, and so people have discovered one, so they go to one. It's, it's a nice playground. it's a nice playground, they do, they do. It's all fun.
That's true.
What is the wise contractor?
Have you ever reacted, I think it was so, an H and another, another year? Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we did well, we, we, we had a, we had a good season, we were probably conference in twenty.
And the, the new fence went in around the playground, right?
The fence on the playground, um, that, that was, that was, that was an interesting project because the contractor couldn't take material. I think he got it through June, so it wasn't available. And, um, Wavy, Wavy House, we're, we're starting to see an uptick in usage. We lost all rentals for twenty, for twenty twenty, for weddings, people weren't doing those things. But our, our, we started, we had one, two weddings, one wedding in June, two in August, and September, we're busy every weekend, and, October, busy every weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Um, in fact, this weekend is, our dinner is there Friday night. There's a wedding Saturday, another wedding Sunday, so we got a first year, a weekend, eighteen months. So that's good, it, it, but people are coming in, they're booking, they're interested in the house. Uh, the ADA construction is pretty much completed, there's some modification they have to make, the, uh, fire escape. They put in the fire escape, the transit guy didn't modify it, but they do that, but the, uh, the new ramps are in, prostitute, landscaping, it's all like. But that was a project, the contractor was very good to work with, uh, he helped us around the fence we had. There's now a nice ramp, if you come out of the loggia, it's a wheelchair, you know, walker or cane. So ramp down both sides to, to, to the loggia, to, to the patio, the side, the side coming out with the, the part of the house. So everybody's on.
Steve, what do we, um, what is, what is the rental fee at the?
It depends, it, um, I don't remember off the top of my head, it, it ranges from twenty-seven hundred dollars to four thousand dollars. Which is pretty comparable to what, what the, the rich girl does in Lonsbury House, and the baby does, it's very well. We, 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 B, B is, B Watkins, why, why? She's in contact with all of us, and we're just all the time waiting, going, what's going on? It's interesting, uh, a company bought the, uh, the O G D place, Westall, we, we have, which is not called the Coder Oaks. And they called me, I called them and asked, you have a conference type thing, that you can't handle, or toward the west there? They're looking for this.
Which place is that, and so?
Okay, it's, it's, it's not, we, we have, what is Westall, it's, it's called the Coder, the Coder Oaks, it's really nice. It was the O G T corporate, corporate, corporate training center. They got, actually, they actually have hotel rooms and everything else. But they're looking for some business, so we, 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 we is in touch with all the venues that are similar to Wavy House, whether, whether your rates are, how you know they exist. But, you know, one of our, one of our educators, who's, she's finally getting back business where he had nothing. He, he, now it's, it's getting, it's getting, you know, four, five or six events a month, which is nice. For a month, he must get, I mean, hasn't happened. So it's gonna pick back up, it's, a lot of our local town organizations are coming back for, for some daytime meetings. And they're already closing back for the Thursday, starting in October. The garden comes back for meetings, we're facing, so it's nice to see groups coming back, that, that, just to practice social, just to, they ask, they, they spread out. But it's a, it's nice to see the groups back, some groups are asking, they can be outside of the patio, because they want to be outside. We're gonna, we're gonna speak about that.
What about the rec activities? I know you can do at the schools, the after-school programs, are those?
That, that hurt us on the revenue side.
Yeah.
Couldn't do the after-school program, but we, we've started to do sports programs, while we have our lessons, we have, uh, chess, we have some, uh, we started from our classes.
But at Wavy, none of the schools though?
That's cool.
We have.
We do classes at Wavy, but the schools, we're doing, uh, 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 chess class, after-school tennis class. So we're getting back, it's just, Sonya's back in, the run's back in there, so hopefully it'll pick up here. Uh, we're making plans now for, uh, our fall pumpkin painting contest in, uh, our Halloween. Uh, then, last year, we had a drive, a drive-by, uh, you know, walk-through drive-by, where we had the whole front circle going with the, all, uh, Halloween, uh, things, usually thing, whatever. We had to be prepared hoodie bags for the kids, and we had these shoots, and so one of our staff, there's just nothing there. The kids came by the, send their hoodie bag on the shoot, or, or the car came by, and pissed on the car. Um, we did, last year, we, we were named to do a breakfast Santa, so we had drive-by with Santa, and, and buy a picture of Santa. And the, so we were making plans for that this year. On the twentieth of October, we'll have the, uh, the high school, we'll be hosting the F-Stack cross country weekend, to celebrate the lot. Twelve hundred miles, respect, and then the following Monday, Monday, the first of the month, a member of Safe Loos, uh, hosts, characters to the cross country championship. We've got those two chips back, which is. And then parks is getting a lot of use, we get a lot of people walking, a lot of people jogging, we've got families coming, we've got bicycle riders. So it's, it's, it's good to see that the activity. Trails, Tiger's got a new job, he's gonna, we're gonna fix the trailer to wash out from downhill, so. So we, this, this, our hat was, it's, it's, it's required drainage, the contractor's gonna change for that. They fixed some of the trails out by the parkway that washed out of the building. We were working most, so I think, you know, we're slowly getting back to a norm, a semi-normal.
What about the, um, the fields with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation? Cause they had to cancel their field fest, it's, or.
That was, that was a fundraising event.
For that, yeah, yeah, but are fees still?
Summer, they rent, they had two or they had four lacrosse tournaments, they had, they rented the field out through the, through the lacrosse, some week nights for, for practices. We had the River River Football Tournament, which went off well. Right now, this fall, we've got the, we've got, uh, youth football's got the almost three hundred kids playing. We've got girls field hockey, which is practicing on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday nights on, on the field, on the Villa Hat Field. And they also play their games on Saturday afternoons. Uh, soccer association is usually running for practices, and they're also playing games on the water tower field on Sundays. Uh, we've got the, they've got activities on, on the sex fields and also the water fields. So the high school's got their programs on, on full, 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 so, you know, there's a lot of activity. We got a brand, we got the random parking lot, which is pretty by the water towers, which can hold ninety cars, or eighty-seven cars, which, which really helps with parking for water tower fields.
And there might be the ice rink there, right?
Ice rink will be over by the bathroom.
Oh, that's, okay.
Uh, we had Indian tennis come in, they, they took the high school tennis courts, they stripped all seven courts down to bare concrete, they acid washed it. Uh, the crew worked all weekend, putting down a new base coat, through the, 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 it's like, it's got clear coat, the, the sand in it. Uh, the crew worked, uh, yesterday, they put in the first coat of green on the courts, today they put the first coat of blue for, blue court, so. And whether, many, I don't think you're gonna get through it, done tomorrow, through your Friday, but, uh, only by the middle of next week, we'll have a, a real finish, when we get there.
That post tension really has a kind of, well.
It's, it's correct, it's, it's held very well, we took the same service down. But, you know, they, they did make some recommendations that we should think about coming in once a year and putting, and washing the courts and putting down a, uh, outside. If their courts aren't totally flat, you can use a mower to get out the water, they all need to, to help deter the paint, so they, they're gonna put the other poles in. The tennis courts, they pick them all, which once a year, put that outside, they clean them, so.
And sorry, and would they, the athletic foundation, were the fees for the field suspended during COVID? How is that working right now?
No, they've been, they've been, the field fees and these groups, they, last year, COVID, a lot of these groups didn't have a season or whatever, they, this spring, they, they, last fall, they were too many groups that they, they had short seasons, they hang it all, so. This spring, they, they hunted baseball, softball, uh, soccer, lacrosse. And it's, and our men's softball's gotta contribute towards it, this fall, we're saving soccer, field hockey.
Can I ask a?
Yeah, career.
Can you hear me? Um, Steve, is there, you know, with so many people no longer returning to their office and working from home remote, are there, is there a list of locations or rooms or spaces that people can actually reserve and rent for like a three-hour meeting? Is there anything like that in town?
Um, not that I know, we, 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 we allow, we cannot, our organizations to meet downstairs, uh, in Wavy, or, or, right now, these are conferences upstairs. Uh, we still have our office split, two different rooms upstairs, the IT office, but, uh, uh, we, we haven't rented, I haven't rented any rooms out for, like, an hour or two hours.
Like a baby, app, um, I'm just wondering if, if that's, uh, something we can think about. I know my husband, when he's got to have an office meeting, they, they kinda have to hunt around for a space.
I mean, we, you have a conference, we can rent that, maybe, uh, Lapone is, uh, I, I didn't think, tell them that they did, during, during COVID, they did a lot of, a lot of virtual, uh, Zoom meetings and Zoom activities, and in September, uh, Aggie, funeral programs, welcome people back. A lot of enthusiasm, uh, we have people coming back now for first classes, our class, exercise classes. So a lot of time is being used, and so it's, I don't really have any tools, there's maybe some time, during the day, we direct, uh, one of the two classrooms out, but, in the small classroom, or the large classroom, but, uh.
Steve, how about the library? The Wavy Library, that's never used.
It, it, it's.
Well, we don't use it, it's, it's.
We do use it, so they still got a lot of infirmary.
Yeah, but it's, it's like, it's a big room that is really almost never used. So I think we should think about using it, because, you know, all of a sudden, where people are gonna say fifteen years from now, I need to spend more money to replace the furniture in rooms that were sat on it. And I know there are some nice things, but I think, I think especially the cameras and stuff like that, it's an asset that we should consider making available, because it's just fitting.
The library, the furniture, library, it's all original furniture, that, that we bought, it was all there, this, this point that buy.
But we, it's not used.
I know, maybe, we're using it, but we had a lot of bandwidth in that room, a lot of things were supposed to happen. And, and for weddings, we used to go to weddings, we had a lot, a lot of things happen.
Yeah, maybe after weddings, but maybe for a business meeting or something like that, cameras, you know, I assume we should.
And since I, I have two large houses, you, you have to, how do you, that take, it take a lot of space in that, and how, where do you put them? That's the problem.
Oh, no, you wouldn't.
Yeah, but we talked about opening that for a while, so.
I hear that, I hear that Bob Nott's a wild man in the meeting.
Yeah, it'd be a fun meeting.
But, but to go back to a lot, Aggie's got a great, for, except this wall, where people are, people are coming back, uh, they do, they, they, everybody, everybody puts back, say, if you do wear masks there, so they're, they're coming back, they're, they're. They're starting to use it, and, uh, she did a lot of classes, stuff, programs this summer, we're outdoors. We're back a lot.
Um, so move on to, okay, move to parks. Um, Wavy Trails, I don't know if this is Tiger, but, um, can you just give us, I, I know they keep on getting washed out, any update on those?
You've mentioned that, you know, we, we went and we repaired the majority of them, Steve mentioned that the, the selectmen approved the contract this morning to, uh, repair the set of, of, uh, trails leading from the west, uh, parking lot down to Lapone Road, inclusive of, uh, uh, additional swale work and some additional drainage work to, uh, help alleviate the problem.
And then, um, a, a question I get a lot, and it's online a lot, is the, the garbage situation at Mead Park. I know John Howes says, you put in garbage cans, it, you know, more garbage accumulates, but I'm getting people saying, you know, I, I think the playground is a real problem there.
Well, the, uh, about ten years ago, fourteen years ago, the, the, the town fathers removed our, uh, monies for garbage collection out of our budget, uh, and we instituted a carry-in, carry-out policy, and to be quite honest with you, the, the amount of garbage that's in and around the parks is drastically reduced from before that, that timeframe, so making people carry them in and carry them out, or actually, our concession was to, uh, put dumpsters at each, uh, park, whereby state parks, they don't even have a dumpster, you know, but seem, they seem to be devoid of garbage, um, which is quite interesting. The, uh, one of the problems that we have, we start instituting garbage cans back in Mead, I'm gonna be, it's gonna be a floodgate, and I might as well put them up back everywhere else. And the problem that I have is that they get filled up with, uh, half-filled water bottles, half-filled gator weight bottles, I've lost, uh, several employees, the shoulder injuries that, uh, take six months, eight months, nine months to repair, and, um, it's quite an expensive town for that, uh. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
And people bring your home garbage, that's, that's part of the other issue.
I see it all the time.
Right, so it's, we've been, we've been carry out, carry in, carry out for a decade. You know, the, uh, it's, it's, it really comes down to the fact that people brought it in, bring it out.
Wouldn't it make sense, and maybe it's silly, to put up a sign, you know, keep our parks clean, carry in, carry out, and, and it could, I know there's many signs around town, but, just something to remind people that we all have to, it's our responsibility to keep the parks clean.
Yeah, we have two raccoons to play around E Park, I.
Yeah, the raccoons.
To your park, we hung them all.
Water filling stations, they're up and running now, right?
We put the one in Kiwanis, um, that was the one that was of concern. The, uh, we actually had to relocate the installation and then bring in electrical power and, uh, uh, change the water line to it, but it's in, it's been in service for, I don't know, a month? Steve, what'd you say, three weeks?
Uh, yeah, it got, it, it, the, the problem was that getting, like, getting the plumber back, because he was still hooked up, but it, it's, it went, went, uh, the last week in July.
Is there one going in need or no?
Uh, John has, and they haven't put it up yet. There were still a lot of questions, you know, back as far as they, we still have workouts, I've worked out, so, I, John said he hasn't, he worked out, he part out.
Tiger, do you want to?
I'm sorry, I missed that statement.
The water fountain, E Park Lodge, I think John has moved out there, right? We were waiting for the spring through.
Yes, yeah, at the, at now, by the time we bring it in, put it in, it's time to take it out. Since we'll have to winterize it.
I, Tiger, I have one question, and maybe Steve too. I had a couple residents mention driving up Wavy Road at two oh-five or two-ten, um, on the high school, that's, uh, has, and, and out of curiosity, I did it myself, and I was actually shocked at, you know, I always think people exaggerate, but it's, it's amazing, you know, these kids come out of there, has anybody mentioned that to you?
No. I, you're if.
When, when, you have to exit the high school, so when you, in the morning, in the morning, it's like, in the morning, if you drop at the high school, you can't exit back, or, or, you gotta go way out. It's, the traffic through parks is pretty crazy with this.
Well, just, I mean, it's not so, it, it's the kids actually driving at a speed that is remarkable, and you, you all know, you've driven through those trees, and sometimes you think, you don't know what happened. Holy smokes, these kids are coming out of there recklessly, it's wild, I mean, maybe, hopefully nothing will happen, it's only for that.
We can reach back out to the high school and ask the administration to kind of talk to the kids about the fact that they're driving through Wavy, you know, they're driving through a park, and that the speed limit is fifteen miles per hour through the park.
Speed bumps?
I said when they put that in, and I was, they'd be really unhappy if they were going wide and going straight. No, I mean, like, cur, the curves are naturally, they're naturally speed, uh, you know, slowing.
Calming?
Yeah, calming, but it's, it is, it was surprising how quick those kids were coming out of there. Um, hopefully, there's only walking at that point, because with two-lane traffic, it, it's, it's pretty rare. I can mention to Brian too, I just thought, I, I just, I just didn't know if you had heard it.
Could speed bumps, they're temporary ones?
Humps.
Or they're, they're, they're called.
The original roller plant had to, uh, at the entrance, South Avenue, just moving up opposite Suri Road, so, it's, it's Suri Road, so the, the gates, you see, these would be closed up, and then they're out.
Yeah.
Is it, could that happen, and could you put in those temporary?
Humps?
Yeah.
Um, you can do it for the, for the, uh, non.
We, we put it in, we, we put them in before, and then they'd be, then we had a snowstorm that was early and wound up, you know, ruined. Yeah, you know, we can certainly look at it, but we, we're trying very hard not to put speed bumps anywhere in town.
I, I think, Tiger, you're correct, if we just mentioned it to, to the high school, I'm making it sort of public service, but it's just that people walk in there. And, you know, it's a park, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a luxury coming out of there, because they're saving a lot of time, but take it easy.
Could, could you put up the, your speed is this, I love those signs, because they make you.
The police have done that a couple times, so they.
Not everyone's gonna stop, but when I see them, I'm like, oh shoot, I gotta slow down, I mean, I actually like them.
When you're eighteen, the thing is, can I get it to roll?
They did that the other week. But those, those signs are in great demand, right, Tiger?
Yeah, we, we only have about three pair of them, and and you would be surprised, we get probably requests a week or more, a couple requests a week. I'll speak to Deputy Chief De Federico and see if we can't get him to put, put them out there again. Given the fact. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think we should get more of these, so you have more of them, they're great, I mean, they're really a positive.
Well, come budget cycle, I'll put another set in my budget, but in the, in the past, they were removed.
Well, okay, because I'm obsessed with this. The trees in Waveney, if those are gonna die, the beach trees along the trails, is the money needed to be added to the budget to take those down?
Some money to be added to the budget, well, we, we manage within what we have. Yeah, you know, right now, we've got a, we've got a huge die off of ash, so.
Yeah.
We're working, I mean, I, we, we awarded a forty thousand dollar contract for a bid that just went out for tree removal, and seventy five percent of them were ashes. So, right now, we've been managing with, with what we have, I, I won't stop Bob from an emergency take down if he has to, that's, that's, you know, we'll have to find money in our budget to do that. I'll ask him to see if we're gonna need more money going forward, but, you know, we're trying to work with what we have.
Yeah, it had a branch, massive branch down. There's a huge beach on the, one of the trails, that's, the leaves are gone.
Unfortunately, we have a, they have a blank, the, the boardwork.
Yeah.
Another fun insight that's arrived from Charles and Shannon.
So I don't have anyone, anything else?
Now, it's exciting to hear how much the rec programs.
Oh, it's great, with COVID, we came back, I mean, we were busy during COVID, one month we were closed, the month of April, when it closed everything, and then. We, we sold our own tennis courts in high school, did it, we were, we could get the course to Harpo, because the. Then you got many of them in twenty twenty till the end of June, which is really late, last year, Tiger, we were just kind of, we were open the first weekend, and today, so it's great. The activities are there, people want, people are actually outside and do stuff, so whatever we can do, we're doing, build ski, we're, Bill Capick, he did a regard of. We, we got our, I did mention our fly football program, we've got three hundred and fifty kids going fly ball.
From a, yeah, security standpoint, break ins in the parking lot and the security camera installed, cameras. I mean, you don't get this, I don't, you don't get to see the footage, but how does the feedback been as far as? Do we think that we're, those are doing anything to deter any of these break ins or?
I, I would hope they are, I mean, the police have got someone signed looking at the cameras and stuff.
There were break ins at the pool, right, someone smashing windows.
That's the parking lot by the dog park.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't over the big pool actually, but you gotta, you drive in, there's a camera right there, you grab it, you really can't, but the, like, doesn't stop, so we walk in, we align, it's last, last match, grab the roll.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Hey, Tom, you're very quiet.
No, look, I'm, I'm good with everything that's been said so far.
Anyone want to add anything before we go?
No, this has been very helpful, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you, sorry about the technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Good.